I'll try not to wave my hands around too much, which is what I usually do, so that hopefully you can hear me. If I forget, if I get distracted, please wave, shout, do something to remind me that I shouldn't be holding my microphone right in front of my mouth. I'm really pleased to be invited to come and talk this morning. It looks a really interesting morning, particularly once I've sat down and I can enjoy the rest of the day. It's a subject that I've been interested in. I did have a proper social work job before I became part of the Mental Capacity Act team, and working in a mental health team. Some of the characters and people I remember working with were people who self-neglected, and particularly those people who hoarded belongings. And just the complexity and the difficulties of understanding what was happening, knowing how to intervene, and finding a positive way of working with somebody with deeply entrenched behaviours was frustrating, but it's a subject that I'm very interested in. I'm very pleased that now it's part of the safeguarding agenda. It's raised the profile, and I think events like this can only be helpful in helping us think about how do we manage situations where people are neglecting themselves, and particularly from this morning's point of view, around hoarding and belongings. How do we work with those people effectively? I think I've got a relatively few points I'm going to make in about three-quarters of an hour, with I've been asked at least in time at the end for questions. I want to highlight the tensions that are involved in this sort of work. I mean certainly looking at the tension somewhere between safeguarding and how the Mental Capacity Act works in many ways, as well as looking at the similarities and how they complement each other and one is dependent on the other. Certainly, as you will know, about the duties of local authorities and other agencies to safeguard people, to protect people, is very much around helping and protecting people in the board's area. But even within the six principles, and I'm assuming you know these principles, they're not new, they're part of safeguarding, but the two I've highlighted highlight that tension that's around these sorts of cases, these sorts of incidents, the difference between the difficulties of both empowering people, respecting people's choices, enabling people to live their lives in the way that they wish to, at the same time a duty to protect, support, to stop people from coming to harm, or if they're coming to harm already, to minimise or reduce the harm that they're coming to. That's a tension within the safeguarding principles, it's a safeguard between the approach that if we are trying to safeguard somebody that's there. Generally, the Mental Capacity Act, I see, certainly is about protecting people's rights, largely about protecting people from unwarranted intrusion. The underpinning ethos, I think, is that once we're adults, from the Mental Capacity Act point of view, once we're 16, but certainly once we're adults, as long as I'm not interfering with other people, I'm actually free to make my own decisions. I ought to be encouraged, enabled, empowered, to take control over my own life as much as possible. And a lot of the rights around the Mental Capacity Act is making sure that people don't intrude in my life unless it's absolutely necessary. The other side of that, of course, is that if I'm not able to make decisions, particular decisions for myself, actually there is then a duty for people to step in and make those decisions for me, but again in my best interests. So again, there's that tension between protecting people's rights to live their own lives, to make their own decisions, and for those decisions to be respected, however much somebody else may dislike them or disagree with them, with the obligation that if somebody isn't able to make a capacitor's decision, somebody will step in, prevent them from coming to harm, or at least minimise that harm, and make decisions on their behalf. And the principles, again, I won't go through them in detail because I'm hoping desperately that you know those, they're familiar to you, they're the sorts of principles you will be using every day as part of your work with people. The first, they all abide that protection, it's obeying the presumption of capacity. I don't have to prove that I can make my own decisions. If you want to interfere in my life, against my wishes, make decisions for me, you have the obligation to show that I can't do it myself. Followed up by the second principle, and I'll come back to the second principle a couple of times this morning, whereas we have an obligation to give people every opportunity to make their own decisions. And how do we do that in organisations that are extremely busy, that are short of resources, that have a style of working that's more and more about short-term work with people? How do we still take account of those limitations, but respect the second principle about giving people every opportunity to understand and make their own decisions? And I think some of the examples in later presentations about how to engage people, how to find a way into people's lives who may be reluctant to accept services, is a way of respecting this second principle about how do we find inventive ways of engaging with people to enable them to take as much control over their lives as possible. And the unwise decision one, how do we make that distinction between yes, absolutely fine, or 100% agree? Just because someone makes an unwise decision doesn't necessarily mean they lack capacity. At what point does a number of unwise decisions spill over into that grey area and then over the line into is this just an unwise decision, or is this an indication that there's something more going on and actually they don't have the capacity to make the decision? So again, respecting the principle, but actually putting it into practice is the difficulty. And as I said, the other side of, as well as protecting people's rights, the last two principles about if they can't, then there is an obligation to act in their best interests. And acting in their best interest isn't necessarily walking away when they say, no, thank you, I'm not interested. It's about protecting people as well. So that tension is there, whether we're looking at it purely from a safeguarding point of view, or from a Mental Capacity Act point of view. On the one hand, we are trying to promote independence, we're trying to respect people's autonomy as adults. On the other hand, we have an obligation to protect people, and we find that difficult. I find that difficult as an individual, I think we find that difficult as agencies and as organisations. The House of Lords Committee is now a couple of years old, but were very critical in a couple of areas, in some ways looking at both sides of where things haven't worked out okay. So there was a criticism of professional attitudes, of paternalism and being risk averse, of interfering, of overpowering, of not allowing people to take risks, of concentrating too heavily on the safety and protection, and that undermines the aspiration of empowerment, where people need to be encouraged and enabled to make their own decisions. So on the one hand, we get it wrong by interfering too much and not allowing people to take risks. On the other hand, there's the criticism that the presumption of capacity in particular can be used as an excuse, maybe putting it too strongly, although I know a number of people who would use stronger terms than that, but as a mechanism by which we don't engage in difficult situations, where we withdraw from situations which then leave vulnerable people at either the risk of harm or actual harm. And again, the House of Lords reflected a number of people's criticisms that agencies can stray far in that direction. So on the one hand, we find it difficult because we get criticised if we interfered too much and too soon, on the other hand, we will be criticised if we don't intervene when we need to. And getting that balance right is extremely difficult. And in some ways, that's the key really, is how do we get that balance right? And I'm hoping that many of the talks this morning will address the practical difficulties of how do we tread that very fine line, that grey area between promoting people's rights, respecting their autonomy, and protecting them when necessary, and doing that in a sensitive way that makes sense to that individual. And I think self-neglect and hoarding, bring that sort of dilemma out in particular ways, I think it is the crux of dealing with people in those situations. The other bit I think is difficult with self-neglect is whose interests is it that we are dealing with? It's very rare, I think, that the person themselves has come to us asking for help. It's almost always somebody else that is concerned that gets statutory agencies particular involved. It may be the neighbours, it's the fact that the property is now so decrepit, so smelly, they see people in a situation and they think that something must be done. It may be people's families who are concerned about the way that their family member is living. It might well be other professionals who come to us and make referrals because they've gone in, they've seen a situation, and something must be done. And there's always the media, leaving people the fear of organisations in particular, but more and more individual workers are ending up on the front page of at least the Echo, if not the Daily Mail. I think it's very difficult then to separate out sometimes, where are the drivers? Whose interests are we responding to? Who is at the focus of our interventions? And it's making sure, again, in both safeguarding and in the Mental Capacity Act, around making sure it's the person, the individual's interests that are kept at the forefront. What the MCA doesn't do is give the answers to the complex professional judgement questions about what to do in a particular case. That's your professional responsibility. What I like about the whole safeguarding issue, about making safeguarding personal, is it reflects that focus of the MCA about the individual. It's about this individual, it's about their life, about who they are, it's about what's important to them, it's about their set of circumstances. And that makes finding easy answers to complex problems very difficult. In fact, it makes it impossible because they probably aren't easy answers. And the Mental Capacity Act won't give you the answer to what do I do with this particular person, with this set of risks, with this set of lifestyles, with this set of beliefs, with these sets of wishes and preferences. It won't give you the answers of what to do, but what I think it does do is give a framework within which to wrestle with those dilemmas. It gives you the framework which can be shared between the agencies that are involved with the person themselves as much as they are able, and with family, friends, and other people that are involved in the situation. A common set of approaches to how are decisions made about what should we be doing. And also, I think it gives partly the legal framework within which those decisions are made. And that's one of my, if you've listened to me in the last couple of years, you will know that I will bang on about the importance of knowing the legal basis for our interventions. I don't have the right to interfere in someone's life just because I think it's a good thing. I don't have the right to intervene in someone's life just because it's safeguarding, or because they are at risk, or because it will help them. I need a legal basis. I work for the local authority, I do some work for the CCG. There are legal boundaries, there are legal duties that I have to carry out on behalf of those organisations. There are also legal boundaries to what I'm entitled to do. And I can't go beyond those without showing the legal basis for my actions. In many ways, in most people that we deal with, informed consent is our legal setting. We go in, we do an assessment, we offer services, we offer suggestions. The person is able to weigh them up, have a look at them, and say, yeah, that's very nice, thank you very much, or no, thank you, I don't think I bother. And if we're going to intervene, our legal basis most often is a capacitor's consent. If they're not consenting, we're then looking at do we have any other legal basis for what we're doing? The Mental Capacity Act might well be. If they lack capacity, that will be our basis for intervening, quite possibly with the additional authority of the Court of Protection. But again, the Court of Protection works within the Mental Capacity Act. I've put some other legislation down there which also may be appropriate. They have different powers, and in many cases they won't be appropriate, but they might be, and it's about considering all the options if we're looking to intervene in somebody's life and we haven't got their consent to do so. What's our legislative basis for intervening? Again, the Mental Health Act will give some powers that might be useful in some situations. A bit later on, we'll be talking, the talk from the Pool Housing Association, which will talk about some of the housing powers that are available. The police have police powers. They won't always be appropriate in every situation, but it's being aware of what's available, and when we're looking at an individual set of circumstances, what have we got open to us that might be helpful, that might give us the authority to do the things that we think are essential to safeguard that person's welfare? I've put up a few things under the Mental Health Act. Sections two, three, and four are only about detaining people into hospital. Now, that might be appropriate, but in most cases, we're not looking to move somebody out of their home and put them into a mental health unit. However, there may be occasions when they meet the criteria for detention in hospital. They would need a mental disorder of a nature or degree that warrants that detention. It's not going to be useful in every situation, and certainly when, I think, some of the later presentations look at the best practice and what's most effective of working with people who self-neglect, quite often removing them from their home and putting them in a hospital possibly isn't often the most appropriate way of intervening. But if necessary, those are powers that could be used. That then gives the legal basis for removing a person from their home. Section 115 is less often thought about. It gives the right of an AMHP to enter a property and inspect the premises, and that would involve inspecting a person if they're there as well. They have to go at a reasonable time, they have to give some warning. It does say that it can't be a hospital, but it's unlikely to be talking about hospital settings in this case. It gives people, it gives an AMHP the right to enter and inspect, and that might be useful to be able to give the legal power that may persuade someone to allow someone through the front door. It doesn't allow people to do an awful lot more than that, but at least it might get you through the front door, get somebody through the front door. However, it has no power of entry. So I can have all the rights in the world to go in if somebody then shuts the door and says, no, please go away. It doesn't give me the right to go in against their wishes. As I said on the slide, refusing to let someone in, allow an approved mental health professional in, is an offence under section 125 of the Mental Health Act. However, that still doesn't give you the right to go in without somebody's permission. It may be part of the evidence for section 135 warrant, which is about going to the magistrate's court and making the argument that it is, there is reason to believe that the person is suffering from mental disorder, and if they're living on their own, is not able to care for themselves, or if they're living with someone else, is not being kept, what's called under proper control. It gives, that does give a power of entry. It means a warrant executed by the police with the mental health services in attendance to assess the person, and it's necessary to remove them to somewhere which is a place of safety to assess their mental health, and to make either arrangements for them to be detained under the Mental Health Act, or other arrangements for their health and care. Again, a fairly major intervention in someone's life, not something that is going to be used that often, but it's about being aware that it's there when you're looking at situations where getting access to somebody, doing an assessment of somebody is proving problematic. I haven't put guardianship up there. Again, it's worth considering, but I suspect in a relatively small number of cases where section seven guardianship may be appropriate. But again, only applies to people where there is a reasonable suspicion of a mental disorder. So clearly, for many people, that isn't going to be an issue. I was asked to just highlight the police power of entry, mainly I think to reinforce that it's quite limited. I think that we quite often think that other people that are in different agencies have greater powers than they really do, and one of the things that police wanted to make clear was the limitations on their powers of entry. They do have power of entry, section 17d of the Police and Criminal Evidence Act, but it is about saving life and limb, preventing serious damage to property. It's about an immediate risk, it's about an urgency, it can only be used in those situations. It's not something that can be used for a chronic situation where nothing really is changed. And the common power law of entry about breaches of apiece, again, is about immediate action. If there is an emergency, if there is an immediate risk of serious harm to somebody or serious harm to property, they do have the right, and that may be appropriate in some situations. In most occasions though, that isn't the way that you're going to be going. So again, it's knowing it's around, but knowing the limitations of what's available to the police. Going back to the Mental Capacity Act, again, the assessment of capacity in safeguarding issues, the assessment of capacity for self-neglect and hoarding cases, is the same test of capacity for any other decision that you may be asking people to make. It's not something peculiar to safeguarding, it's not something peculiar to self-neglect or hoarding. The test there is again, one I'm hoping that you are familiar with. If you're not, then, and you're from Dorset, I probably wasted the last sort of eight or nine years of my life, because that's, hopefully, what I've been doing is making sure that this is extremely familiar to you. What I think is, I want to pull out of it in a safeguarding and particularly a self-neglect context, is the impairment of or disturbance in the functioning of the mind or brain that causes someone to not be able to do one of those four things. Extremely difficult, I think, sometimes, particularly when people don't want to talk to you, and you don't have huge amounts of information about somebody, and they don't want to sit down and subject themselves to a formal assessment of either their health, which might explain the impairment or the disturbance in that functioning of their mind or brain, or indeed engage in formal assessment of their capacity, their ability to make a decision. I think the structure, the test, is very straightforward, in theory. What we're looking at is very straightforward. It is that, is there something that's going on in their mind or brain that stops them making a decision? How do I know it stops them? They can't do one of those four things, the understanding, the retaining, using and weighing in, coming to a conclusion, and communicating that conclusion to me. As with all situations, very straightforward, until you actually introduce an individual into that, and then it becomes much more difficult. We don't have to have a formal diagnosis, as with almost everything in the Mental Capacity Act, and that's one of the reasons why I like it, is we simply have to have a reasonable belief. It's not about being right, it's about being reasonable. What is it that I think is going on? With the evidence that I have, from this person, from those that know them, from their actions in the past, from what is going on, what do I know about them? What is my reasonable belief? What is that based on to make me think that there is an impairment or something that is disturbing the functioning of their mind or brain? And then, how does that impairment or disturbance stop them making the decisions we're talking about? What the courts have called the causal nexus. It can't simply be that, for instance, somebody has a learning disability and they're not making a decision. My job is to make the link between that impairment of their mind or brain and that inability to make a decision. That's not always easy, under favourable circumstances. It becomes more complicated and more difficult when someone is reluctant to engage with me or with other services that are involved in their care. There's a train of thought, and I think Susie Brager will mention it in her presentation, and it's a subject that I find fascinating, around looking at different sorts of capacity, the decisional versus executive capacity. It's referred to the sorts of situations where somebody can talk through what they're doing. They can appear to understand the need for things to change, they may understand what the consequences are happening, but they never seem to actually put it into practice. So it's one thing to sit in somebody's living room, or possibly stand on their doorstep and have that conversation with them, and they can appreciate that something will need to be done, and they will be doing it, and they will have all the intentions quite possibly of doing so, but actually the evidence would suggest that that doesn't happen. And there is a view, and I think it's an interesting discussion to be had. I'm not sure, fairly sure, well, that is not a discussion I want to go into in great depth today, but I think the MCA test itself in the Mental Capacity Act doesn't talk about an ability to put decisions into practice. The test is what the test is. However, I think any assessment of whether someone can, you will use and weigh information, any assessment of whether someone understands the situation that they're in, the circumstances that they're in, and what is being proposed, must take into account their understanding of the fact that the evidence would suggest they haven't put those decisions into practice. Do they have an understanding that, yes, this is the 27th time they've had this conversation, and actually nothing has changed? Do they understand that left to, without the support, that things are unlikely to change, however much they are saying that that's what they want to do? That I think is part of the capacity assessment. So while I think there's a very interesting sort of, I was going to say academic, that's not quite what I mean, an interesting discussion to be had around where decisional capacity and executive capacity intertwine, I think from a practical and a pragmatic point of view, any capacity assessment must also, as well as looking at people's intellectual ability to understand things, their ability to apply that to their own situation, and to understand the consequences of their inability or unwillingness to make changes, the consequences to them of not accepting help or doing things in a different way. I think most of the talks that follow me will be talking in some ways about what to do with people who don't really want to be engaged. They either find it really difficult, or they don't see the need, or for some other reason, don't wish to sit down and have a formal assessment, and I find it very difficult to engage with services who wish to intervene, to support them to change what's happening. The only things I will be saying is the things that are going to be mirrored later on, around taking time. Go back to what I said before, from an organisational point of view, that can be a challenge. And I think making those arguments to our managers, to those people who hold resources, to be able to show that actually this is something that can't be rushed. Clearly, there are occasions where emergencies need action taken straight away, but in most cases, these are likely to be chronic situations, and it is about finding the time, making the time to be able to engage with somebody, to be able to give them as much opportunity to make their own decisions as possible. There'll be a case example later on, which talks about the different people that are involved in a case, and I particularly like the role played by the local vicar. That'll come up, I won't talk about that because other people will talk about that later on. It's about getting as many people involved as possible and being as creative as possible. One of the stories I did like, situations, was where there was a person who was very reluctant to let anybody inside their property, and various agencies had tried, and it was a MARG meeting, a multi-agency risk management meeting, that pulled together all those people that were involved in that person's life, and it was discovered that the mobile library lady was letting to the property. It was somebody that the woman trusted and allowed into her home. Now, we weren't expecting the mobile library service to be providing high levels of social care, of nursing interventions, or other things, but it was a way in. It was a way of using people who were involved to find a creative way of building a to find a creative way of building a relationship, building a rapport, finding some way of engaging the person with something that they found useful. I can quite understand why I turn up on somebody's doorstep, they are suspicious about how much use unlikely to be to them. They found that actually, someone who brought them library books was a very useful person to interact with, it's using that. And I also think that the fibre gate, when they do their talk about their cell phone well checks, sometimes a uniform is very helpful. I think it's finding a way of gathering information from wherever we can. But ultimately, we simply have to do the best we can with what we've got. We have to be reasonable. And we may not have an ideal assessment, we may not have all the information that we would like. But we need to be able to justify how we've come to our decision about somebody's capacity. Even if that's a tentative one, even if that acknowledges that the information is incomplete, but we are doing the best that we can. I put down there that refusal to participate could be used, and there've been occasions where somebody refusing to engage in an assessment was taken as evidence that they didn't understand the importance of the assessment. They didn't understand the consequences to them of somebody deciding they weren't able to make their own decisions. And so that is another factor to take into account when somebody is refusing to engage. But I would say be very careful. The case, the Wandsworth case down there is one I like a lot. I won't go into it in huge amount of detail because I've already used most of that time. It was a situation where a man who had a whole range of health conditions, he was almost blind, he needed dialysis three times a week because his kidneys were failing, he had diabetes, which was very badly controlled because he didn't like taking his medication. He was, I probably wouldn't put this in case notes, an awkward so-and-so. He didn't like agencies, he had fallen out with Wandsworth Council, who had repossessed his home because it had gotten such a dilapidated and almost derelict condition that they repossessed it, well, they compulsively purchased it. He was then living in hotel rooms as he refused to accept any housing that was provided by the council. They took his house away, he was not going to accept any of their services. So he was housed in hotel rooms, unfortunately, because the hotels quite often asked him to move on because the rooms got smelly and dirty and other residents and guests were objecting. He then moved around the borough quite considerably to different hotels. In the meantime, he had also then been attacked on the strip and suffered a head injury. And the head injury had resulted in definite cognitive deficits. There was a, he eventually got admitted to hospital, mainly because his diabetes became out of control and he had a hypoglycemic attack. Largely, it seems, because his moving around meant that contact with health services became even more difficult than it had been before. The decision was about could he, did he have capacity to make decisions about where he went when he left hospital? People were very concerned about him going into private accommodation. He was insistent, he had no needs of support from social services, and refused to have anything whatever to do with them. Over a period of two and a half years, there have been a number of people making assessments of his capacity. Virtually none of them got any cooperation whatever from them, and some of them did assessments by even seeing him. It went to court because he was challenging their view that he lacked capacity. Even when the court said they needed an expert assessment, the trust came up with a list of 15 psychiatrists who were prepared to assess him. Two got ruled out because they couldn't see him within the time scale the court asked. He refused, all 13 of the others have been unsuitable for one reason or another. He was clearly not an easy person to engage with. Eventually, though, his brother suggested two more psychiatrists and he agreed to see one of them, and actually formed a really good relationship with him. Engaged with him, talked with him, explained his motivations for why he was so angry and why he thought that he didn't need the services that other people felt that he did. The court came to a conclusion eventually that actually he had capacity to make those decisions. Two, two factors were swung on. The first one was they felt that actually he did, he was an awkward so-and-so. He was a character that didn't like services. He had a very good rationale why he wouldn't get involved with Wandsworth Council. And he was still going to refuse, he was either going to use the money he got from the cooperative purchase to buy his own property, or he was going to rent, he was going to rent from the private sector because he wasn't having anything whatever to do with the council because they chopped him out of his house. That was seen as not showing a lack of capacity, that was showing possibly stubborn, possibly bloody-minded, but a rational dislike of Wandsworth Council. The other point that the judge made, which I think comes back to that causal nexus that I was talking about, about having the impairment of somebody's mind or brain connected with their inability to make a decision, was that he said that the cognitive impairment caused by the head injury didn't really change a chap's behaviour very much. He was an awkward so-and-so before his head injury. He's an awkward so-and-so now, he's just now an awkward so-and-so with the additional problem of having some cognitive difficulties because of his head injury. So there wasn't, the trust that was bringing the case weren't able to make the link to say that the head injury, the cognitive impairment that he suffered, was the cause of his sometimes bizarre, certainly eccentric decision-making. So I think it's about being very careful when we're saying people lack capacity. On the other hand, going back to the criticisms of the House of Lords, also be very careful when we're assuming that someone is able to make those decisions. As you will know, if the person's got capacity, the MCA doesn't have any jurisdiction. The Court of Protection can't be involved. I can't be making best interest decisions for people. Best interest decisions only come once somebody lacks capacity to make the decision. I think we need to be looking at other legal avenues. As I said, there are other bits of legislation that might be appropriate. And even if no action is possible, we still need a plan of what we're going to be doing. Again, the multi-agency meetings to have a plan of what are we going to do? Even if that plan is, unfortunately, there's relatively little we can do. How are we planning to try and build relationships? How are we planning to reassess? Can we show that we haven't just walked away, but we provided everything up to the limits of our abilities, our legal duties, our legal powers to intervene? There was a case in the Coroner's Court in London of a man who had neglected himself. He'd refused all the offers of services. Social services had been involved, various bits of the health service had been involved, environmental health had been involved. There'd been voluntary agencies that had been involved, there'd been a range of people that had tried to engage with him. He had been assessed as having capacity on a number of occasions. They reassessed him at various points as his condition deteriorated. He wasn't eligible for any intervention under the Mental Health Act. He didn't have a mental disorder of the nature that would allow the Mental Health Act to be invoked. There was no other legal powers that could be used to impose interventions on him. And eventually, he died, which was incredibly sad and quite traumatic for the people that have been trying to work with him over the months that services had tried to be involved. The coroner went out of his way to explicitly point out that there was no blame whatever attached to the local authority or to the health trust that was involved. And went out of his way to compliment them on the efforts that they had made to support this man. And ultimately, to recognise there was nothing they could have done. He was entitled to make the decisions he did, however tragic the outcome. The difference between that coroner's report and some of the others that have been much more critical of services is it was very clear that people hadn't just walked away, people hadn't just let things drift. There was a definite plan to try and engage with him as inventively and as persistently as possible, but recognising that there are limits to what we can do. We've gone very, very quickly to what happens if someone's lacking capacity with any best interest territory. I always think it's worth checking for lasting powers of attorney or enduring powers of attorney, particularly for property and finance. If someone's got the power of attorney of either sort for property and finance, it means they can give people permission to go into the property. So even if the person you're trying to see is saying, I don't want you to come in, if they lack capacity to make that decision and their attorney gives permission, then we have the legal authority to go in. Now, we may not, may not want to, we're then looking at, from a best interest point of view, we're looking at what's likely to work, how do we work constructively with someone? But it does give us the legal powers to go enter someone's home, even if they're saying, please go away, as long as there is someone with the legal power to do so who has said we can. Some of you will know the story of Manuela Sykes, who was a woman in London, where the courts decided that she should go back home despite the fact that she lacked capacity and despite the fact that people were very concerned about the risk of harm to her and her ability to care for herself. Part of the plan that made that possible was that she had an attorney who gave access to her property to people to do cleaning, usually when she was out. Now, that's always a very delicate decision to be made because going into someone's house and moving things around when they're not there is quite often not the best way of approaching a situation. However, it is worth remembering that if there is someone with the legal authority to let you in, they can do so. And that's something that's useful to check out. Otherwise, we're looking at the usual best interest process. It's about still keeping the person at the centre of what's going on. It's about trying to find out what their wishes and feelings are. It's about trying to explain to ourselves, to understand why they're making decisions, even lacking capacity, what is it that they're trying to achieve? What is it that they're frightened of? What is it that's driving them to behave in the ways that they are? And that then shapes the way that we feel is appropriate to intervene. We need to be clear about what the impact is, that balance between protecting somebody, but at what cost? At what cost are we protecting somebody? By undermining their autonomy, interfering in ways that may well cause them distress. How do we do that in a way that is as sensitive as possible? It certainly doesn't give us carte blanche to do whatever we like. Just because someone lacks capacity, again, going back to that first criticism of the House of Lords, overly protective, overly risk averse, and discounting the impact that somebody has. And certainly for significant interventions, quite often removing somebody from their property against their wishes, even lacking capacity is almost certainly going to need an application to the Court of Protection. There have been a number of cases that people in this room have been involved in over the last couple of years in Dorset certainly, where people have been living, and there seems to be a thing about Dorset, it's the sort of area it is, tend to be older women living in farming settings. Widowed, have lived independently, fiercely independently for many, many years. Properties getting to the stage where actually they're falling down, literally falling down in many cases. They come to the notice of the likes of us. We're very concerned, repairs need to be done, but they can't be done while the person's still living in the property. It's not safe for them, it's not safe for people to be in there. We don't have the right to go in and poke them out. But there've been a number of cases where we've had to make the case to the Court of Protection to get a court order to remove them from their home, place them somewhere safe while the repair works carried out, with the intention of them then returning to their home once it's able to be done. So it's just remembering that even when someone lacks capacity, we don't have unlimited powers to do whatever we like, even if we're convinced it's in their best interest. There are times where we need to get the authority of the court to authorise what we do. Notice, again, hopefully, very familiar. I'll just highlight the thing about being clear about the options that are being offered. I think sometimes that's particularly difficult in self neglect cases. Actually, what are we offering the person? Being very clear about the decisions we're asking them to make when we're assessing capacity. Being very clear about what are the options we're asking them to choose between, what is on offer? What is possible to do, what are we proposing that we would like to do? Because if I'm not clear about it, about what I'm offering, how can I expect a person then to be clear about what they're choosing between? I like the balance sheet, and just again, highlighting the magnetic important issues. There may be lots and lots of reasons why something should happen. There may well be one factor that is so important to that individual that that overrides all the others when we're making our best interest decisions. And that's about, again, finding ways of getting to know what makes this person tick. Who have they been all their life? How have they got to the situation they're in? Very easy for me to stand up here and say that, much, much more difficult to be doing it with someone that you know relatively little about, possibly doesn't have any relatives that you could be in touch with to get information from, and is reluctant to tell you themselves about what happened. But that's, that's the job, if you like, that's what we're aiming to do, is to find out as much about them as possible to inform our best interest decision making. And I think reviewing and building those reviews into our plans is absolutely essential. I will, I haven't left very much time at all for questions. It's to, quite again, just highlight the dilemma that I'm leaving you with, because I'm not going to solve it, I'm not sure anyone's going to solve it. I do hope that some pointers towards how you resolve the difficulty will come from the rest of the morning. It's about, on the one hand, not supporting poor practice by leaving people and walking away and assuming they have capacity and we don't get involved when we should, and leaving them at risk of harm. On the other hand, my favourite quote, and it's just an excuse really to have the Monday's quote in there, is, what's the point of making someone safer if all we do is make them miserable? And that balance will always be there, and I think particularly in the situations of self neglect and people who are hoarding belongings. Thank you very much.